We'll call, or the city will call each case by the case number. They'll read a brief introduction to the case. We ask the appellant to step forward to the podium. At the podium you'll find a sign in, to sign in I think with your name and address. Then we ask you to give us a brief description of the case, what you're asking for, and why. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those or disagree, add anything you'd like at that point. Then we will open it up for public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, first, the city will actually make a recommendation to approve or not approve each case. We'll open it up to the public hearing, so if you're here to speak on a case, you would have that opportunity at that point. Again, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and sign in please. Then we will close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the board. As the appellant, we ask you to stay in the front row, as we might have follow-up questions for you as well. And then we will make a decision on each case and move on to the next case. So with that, will the city call the first case, please?
For ZBA case, which is a tabled case, the appellant, Idan Calabat of Instream PM owner, is requesting the following from the board. A variance of 1.5 feet of building height for a proposed townhome development. 25 feet permitted, 26.5 feet proposed. A .26 acre variance of land area to meet density requirements for a proposed townhome development. 5.14 acres required, 4.88 acres provided. The property is located at the northeast corner of Lasser Road and Dunn Scota Street. Sidwell Parcels 2427, 302, 040, 041, 043, and 044, zoned R1 single-family residential, an RT-attached, single-family residential. This appeal to section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to take it off the table, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is the appellant present? Hi, good evening, please step to the microphone.
I'm Idan Calabat with Instream PM. Business address is 31333 Southfield Road, Suite 250 in Beverly Hills, Michigan. So, this petition was tabled at the last month's meeting of the ZBA, with the request for some additional information. So, we've submitted some additional items for your review. I wanted to go through a couple of those items, because I feel that they add a lot more clarification to the, to this, the issue with specific respect to the height issue. So the first item that we submitted was a copy of the meeting minutes of this project's site plan approval meeting at the planning commission level. The reason why we've provided that to you is Commissioner Jeremy Griffiths of the Planning Commission is one of the only registered archi, is the only registered architect on the Planning Commission. And he's gone on record with respect to this project specifically, and citing the zoning ordinance for the height restriction. So I just want to read out loud his comments, which of course are in the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting. So he says, and I'm looking on page 20 of the meeting minutes, we're looking, starting at line 17. Says, "I guess in general, the building height maximum in our zoning ordinance is too low. It's antiquated, it's before we had higher energy efficient roofs, higher pitched roof slopes, and all the modern design features. So it's a 1960's 412 roof pitch left over, and I think antiquated zoning ordinance piece that we should update." So, the reason why I bring this to your attention and specifically submit this language is I'm not creating this concept that the zoning ordinance is, that the language of the ordinance is creating an implicit hardship on developing this property. This is recognized and supported by one of the planning commissioners, who's the only one who's actually a registered architect on the Planning Commission. So this is, this is not a concept that we've created, or that we just simply decided we're not going to adhere to the zoning ordinance. The second piece to help kind of further illustrate that, you know, we are also constrained by other design factors. When we design a development, there are various multiple levels of the zoning ordinance that we have to consider. And we've done an extremely, I would say, good job at trying to maintain all of the different requirements of the zoning ordinance from, you know, for all of its different facets, within the realms and trying to deliver a quality product as well. The area where we had a hardship is, the two areas that we have a hardship, is in the 25-foot height restriction. And I'm going to kind of demonstrate how that is an actual hardship to modern-day design and construction practices for residential properties, and in the density requirements. Of which we meet two of the three, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But, so the second piece of information we submitted is a typical house section that we prepared for you. Now, this typical two-story residential section is arbitrary of a site, I don't know of a floor plan, it's just a matter of how we would construct a two-story residential home. So the first thing that we've got to consider is, there's a two-foot grade separation from the finished grade, the finished elevation outside the home, and the finished floor elevation of the house. So, that two-foot actually comes directly from the building code. There's a requirement for a minimum of eight inches in vertical clearance from the finished grade outside of the building to any wood framing member of the house. So, we've got eight inches there, and to the first wood framing member is the bottom plate of your wall that sits underneath your floor joists, on top of your concrete wall, on top of your concrete footing. Typically, you then have, you know, a 12-inch roughly, you know, we'll just assume a 12-inch floor joist, for a TGI joist. So, you're eight inches plus 12 inches, you're at 1 foot 8 inches, basically. So you're four inches shy of that two-foot. Where we come up with the two-foot, never in a residential construction does any builder build an 8-inch brick ledge, which is this. Because, the problem he has is, when his landscaper comes to put dirt down, if he comes even a half an inch higher than that brick ledge, he's out of the code. So what we do as builders is, we typically do either a 10 or a 12-inch brick ledge. So, when you factor all that in, with a 10-inch brick ledge, you're at 23 and a half inches, which is your 10-inch brick ledge, inch and a half bottom plate, 12-inch joist. At a 12-inch brick ledge, you're at 25 and a half inches. So, we've kind of averaged that to two feet. So, we're at two feet from the finished grade outside the building to the first floor, the finished floor of the first floor. Moving up from there, we've got, you know, nine-foot ceilings from first, for the first floor. You've got another 12-inch floor joist, and you've got eight foot ceilings for the second floor. So before we've even started to pitch our roof, we're at 20 foot 8 inches approximately. We've not even started to slope our roof. So, that's where you can see that that 25-foot height requirement really starts to constrict at our ability to get creative with the layout of the house, get creative with the look of the house, the aesthetics of the house. We're really confined and constricted here. We've only got another four foot, four inches to work with on the slope. This house, this section here shows that by maintaining a 712 roof slope, the maximum width that we can build with this section is 27 feet 8 inches. If we were to build the 28 feet wide on this house, we'd be outside of that 25-foot maximum building height for the ordinance. So, understanding this, and understanding that this is not, you know, this is, this is a standard, typical, two-story residential construction. This is how it's set up. If you go to many other townships and cities, you'll find that their ordinances have actually been updated and changed in accommodation of this factor right here. So, we wanted to kind of give that to you, so you understand kind of how we came about, where we came about. Now, the evidence of that hardship is really evidenced in, when you look at the elevations and you look at the midpoint spans of a lot of these midpoint roofs. You see that we've got two different four-unit townhomes, a three-unit townhome, and then two different single-family units. So we've got five different building types that are two-story, that are proposed at two-story. All five building types that are proposed at two-story have one roof that is, have at least one roof that is out of that 25-foot max building height. Maybe five different times, we've tried to make work, and on five different designs and different layouts, we're unable to meet that 25-foot height restriction. So, the hardship is actually in the language of the ordinance. And I think that's supported by Commissioner Griffiths's comments as well. Another thing that we've tried to do, as you look at the, as you look at the elevations of this building, and I'm going to, I'm going to point your, I'm going to direct your attention to, get the page here. I'm going to direct your attention to sheet, this is not the right one. Bear with me just a second. A-12. So, on A-12, on sheet A-12, what we're looking at here are the side elevations of the triplex unit here. And you'll see on the right-hand side, we've got midpoint spans that are at 23 feet, 23 foot 7, and then 25 foot 11 and 3/4 on the right-hand side. That's on the backside of the building. On the front side of the building, those same roof spans, their counterparts basically are a lot lower, 24 foot 1 inch, 23 foot, and 21 foot 7 inch. The interesting thing to note here is that the peaks of those roofs, those two roofs, aren't changing. What's changing is, on the backside of the building, you've got two stories of brick elevation. You've got the first floor and the second floor shown. On the front side of the building, the roof slope comes all the way down to the first story. Because the bedrooms in this, in this unit are actually located towards the back of the unit. So, we've got a house, picture a house like this. The point here at the top is the same. The midpoint of the roof slope on the right-hand side, on the back of the building, is 25 foot 11 and 3/4 inch. That same midpoint on the front side of the building, because that slope comes down farther, is 24 foot 1 inch. Slopes are the same, the peak is the same. But, the point at which they are, they end, one ends on a two-story elevation of the house, the other one ends on a one-story elevation of the house. Makes this roof a lot longer, so that midpoint actually gets lowered down. So, it, we're of the belief that the requirement for 25 feet is creating an explicit hardship that is difficult to work around and develop in this, in this situation. And I don't think that this is an isolated situation. I think that what the city will find is that, and this is the first residential development that we've seen in the city, proposed in the city of Southfield for a single-family residential in a long time. Part of that, and a lot of people have asked the question, "Why is that? Why have we not seen that? We wish we could see more." Part of that is because your ordinance is restrictive in a way. That most developers, if, when they look at the language of the ordinance and do their research and homework, and they see that 20, they don't have to run a building section, they don't have to go through the design. They already know that that's a challenging dimension to meet. Through my conversations with other architects and other members of planning departments and things, they've all kind of expressed that, you know, when you tell them, "We've got to get a two-story residential on 25 feet, everyone sighs." Because, from a development standpoint, from a building, from an architectural standpoint, we know that's difficult to meet, that's difficult to accomplish in today's residential construction market. And it's not just the market, a lot of it has to do with the building code requirements have been updated over the last 20 years. Energy require, energy code requirements have been updated. As a matter of fact, the energy code has the biggest implication on these roof slopes. We've got eight, minimum eight-inch high-energy heels on our roof trusses nowadays. The roof slopes have to be higher, they have to allow for added insulation in the roof to meet, you know, specific insulation values. 10, 5, 10, and even 15 and 20 years ago, those requirements were not in place, those codes were, did not exist. So, really, this is, this is a prime opportunity for the city of Southfield to actually look at our, at its ordinance and recognize, with the recognition of planning commission members, we've got the support of the planning department, and it's been through, the planning commission had vetted it, I think we went to two study meetings, and then to a formal meeting with them. Went to the city council, we went to a study meeting, and a formal chamber meeting with the city council. And throughout that entire process, this question of the height has been discussed. And throughout that process, it said, "Well, we know that you need a variance for that, but we understand why you need that variance. Because it's very difficult for you to construct a two-story residential, given the language of our ordinance today." So we really wanted to kind of demonstrate that completely to you, so that you understand that this is not something that we just arbitrarily are disregarding the ordinance. We, on the contrary, we've got a lot of respect for the city of Southfield's ordinance and for the process in which things get done. And this body is really our only means of achieving what we're trying to achieve here today, given the language of the, current language of the ordinance.
Okay, let's move on to the findings, finding facts, please.
For ZBA case 19-04, the appellant, Idan Calabat of Instream PM owner, is requesting the following from the board. A variance of 1 foot 6.25 inches of building height for a proposed townhome development. 25 feet permitted, 26 feet 6.25 inches proposed. A variance of 7.75 inches of building height for a proposed detached site condominium development. 25 feet permitted, 25 feet 7.75 inches proposed. And a .22 acre variance of land area to meet density requirements for a proposed townhome development. 5.14 acres required, 4.92 acres provided. And please note the bolded changes from the legal notice. The location, or the property is located at the northeast corner of Lasser Road and Dunn Scota Street. Sidwell Parcels 2427, 302, 040, 041, 043, and 044, zoned R1 single-family residential, and RT-attached, single-family residential. The property to the north is zoned RT-attached, single-family residential, and is developed with the Meadow Grove Villa condominiums. The properties to the west, across Lasser Road, are zoned R1 and RE, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family homes fronting Lasser Road. The properties to the south, across Dunn Scota Street, are zoned R1, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family homes fronting Dunn Scota Street. And the properties to the east are zoned R1, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family homes fronting both Dunn Scota and McClung Streets. The site contains 6.92 acres of land, 4.88 acres of RT, and 2.04 acres of R1, with 179 feet of frontage on Lasser Road, 627.98 feet of frontage on Dunn Scota Street, and a depth of 400 feet. The proposed site plan indicates the construction of eight multifamily buildings containing 30 condominium units on the northern portion of the site, RT zoning, and nine detached site condominiums fronting on Dunn Scota Street, which is the R1 zoning. In the RT-attached, single-family residential district, density requirements are determined as follows. 2,000 square feet of land area is required per room of 80 square feet or more. The entire RT portion of the development proposes a total of 112 rooms over 80 square feet, within the eight buildings. At 2,000 square feet of land area required per room, thus requiring 5.14 acres. All three model types of multifamily townhomes are proposed to exceed the 25-feet maximum permitted height as indicated. Due to the design of the townhomes, one-story versus two-story with varying peaks and gables, only certain portions of the roofline will exceed the 25-feet height permitted. Regarding the detached site condominium development, fronting Dunn Scota Street, three models are being proposed of various heights and designs, two Colonials and one Ranch. Two of the three model types will exceed the 25-feet, 25-foot permitted maximum height. The location and quantity of specific model types will not be chosen until each unit is sold. Similar to the townhomes, the two models will only have certain sections that exceed the 25-foot height requirement.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add to that right in, right at this moment? You have many more opportunities, I promise.
Yeah, no, I think that's plenty.
Okay. Well, can we get the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve based upon the following. The .22 acre density variance requested is minimal in nature and will not have adverse effects on surrounding properties. The developer could build the same size and number of buildings with five less interior rooms total, and still be compliant, in compliance with the zoning ordinance. However, the market demand is for mostly four-room units consisting of three bedrooms and one combination great room kitchen. The height variances requested are also minimal in nature and will not have adverse effects on the surrounding property. There will be, there will not be a noticeable difference or impact on the open space or light, especially since only portions of the roofline will exceed the 25-foot height requirement, because there is a similar townhome project existing to the north, abutting the proposed townhomes. And there will be an average of 85 feet between the fronts of the new site condominiums and the existing single-family homes on the south side of Dunn Scota Street.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Otherwise, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll go to the board. Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Please step to the microphone. Hi, just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Katrina Gordon. My address is 27205 Devon Shore, 48076. I just want to speak, I hope, you know, that you, hopefully we can accommodate. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm hoping that we can accommodate and allow the gentleman to build this home and new construction. It would be very nice. I'm hoping to see ranches as well. And the reason I'm interested is because I have a mother that's 78, that's living in Southfield, been in Southfield for about 30-something years. And she needs a ranch home. And I think it would be a good opportunity, it's a small, it appears to be a nice-sized entity for ranches and condos. And it's just to see something new, and something, new construction, which we haven't had in Southfield for a long, a long time. As well, I can live in the community with my mother, and be able to walk down the street to greet her, to be there with her. I did look at some of the planning, I like the sidewalk, a lot of new constructions don't have sidewalks. That's very important for the community, because if a senior, you know, needs to sidewalk, wheelchair accessibility, things of that nature. So I'm hoping that this can be brought, and brought to the community very soon. Thanks for your time, and everyone have a great day. Would you like for me to sign this?
Yes, please, sign in, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and open it up to the board. Mr. Russell?
I don't have anything there.
Okay. Ms. Leslie?
Yeah, I have problems with this project. We actually, a few years ago, had a case where they were building an entire new subdivision, not a subdivision, just, it was about four or five blocks infill between two neighborhoods, which were mostly ranches. And then they wanted to build these two blocks, or three, both sides of the street, and down a few blocks, with roofs, roofs exactly like this. And we were concerned at that time about how it would dwarf the other houses, and how it might look, and how it might function. In the end, it was approved, and it was built. So I drove back down there, tried to remember exactly where it was, I found it. And it's, all the homes, it's sold, there's, everything is fine. And it didn't seem like there were any problems with any of the homes on the adjacent streets. It is true that fashions have changed, and on many neighborhoods, actually, if I noticed, on Dunn Scota's, there are, it was leased three or four, or maybe five homes with the same type of pitched roof, it wasn't quite as high, but the same style, at least two levels, not a third level. So, it's, I guess it's even common there, some of the homes look either recently renovated or brand-new, I don't know. But, it, everything on that street looked quite nice and nicely maintained. So it's obvious that people care about their street. So, I think that there would be no useful purpose in denying this.
Okay, Mr. Weigand?
It would have been really helpful, I mean, you have the plans laid out here, and you've got a, where they're supposed to be, but you didn't, on here, you didn't put which was where. So I'm trying to figure out, yeah, let's see, this must be townhouse A. It would have taken one second to do that, so that we could understand what you're doing here. I don't know why you didn't, and it irritates me.
I apologize for that, was, Sarah, did we have the site plan submitted as part of the first submittal package?
I've got it, and it, all it has is the, 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 looking down on it from above.
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Weigand, they are labeled Townhome A, Townhome B, and Triplex at the north end.
Exactly, it is, but it's not on the picture.
Oh. On the elevations?
Yes. I mean, it, it, you know, I don't necessarily am opposed to your product, but you go through all of this, pictures and everything else, and then you don't put a key.
If I might, through the chair, A3 does state Townhome A elevations.
Well, I don't see it.
And then, A7 and A...
Well, I went through and I said, "Yeah, this looks like this," and I marked it on there.
Yeah, it's on the elevations, they're labeled Townhome A, Townhome B.
Very, very minimal and unclear, so, for whatever that, that's worth.
It's in the title block, but I agree with you, Mr. Weigand, we could have put a site plan key, a small little key on there that highlighted exactly where it was built.
Yeah, it would be simple.
Yeah, I appreciate the input on that.
My question, now, on the north side of your property, it's heavily wooded.
Currently.
Currently heavily wooded. Are you going to clearcut the whole area?
We are clearcutting the building footprint areas. So, we've...
What does that mean?
We are clearcutting the areas where we're proposing new buildings. We are maintaining all, as much of the existing trees along the property line as we can, because those create a very natural buffer between our development and adjacent properties.
It really is, and it's very, very nice. If you go and clearcut that whole area, then it looks like downtown Detroit.
It does, we do have a, we do have a fully-developed landscape plan that we submitted to the planning department for review. And I apologize, it wasn't part of the, our ZBA submittal, because it didn't, it didn't necessarily exactly pertain to anything we were asking for a variance on. But we do have proposed evergreen trees planted along the edges of our property, along the entirety of our detention pond. It's a very, it's a very heavily landscaped plan as well, because a part of that stems from the fact that we are clearing so many trees, and that creates a requirement for us to replace trees. So we've actually got quite a few replacement tree requirements. I believe we're in excess of 200 trees, if my memory serves me well. Most of which we've planted along the north, the east edge of our property lines, and in-between the proposed townhomes, the attached condominiums, and the site condominiums along Dunn Scota's. So we've certainly adhered to that mentality of maintaining a densely landscaped buffer between our property and our adjacent neighbors as well.
Well, I would, I would ask you, as your contractor, there are some very, very large, very, very lovely trees there to, rather than chop them down and then put in a little scrubby evergreen, to, if you can, save it.
Yes.
It looks nice in the neighborhood, it looks nice. But, but by and large, developers don't do that. They go and they clearcut it, put up their homes, and then plant trees.
We've, we've got a, we've got a few trees that are on the interior of the site that we are proposing tree protection and preservation around them.
There's one very nice, large one there.
And I'm not entirely sure where that one falls in the footprint, so I can't speak as to whether or not that one is going to be protected or not. I know we have about three or four internal trees that are in areas that they, they fall in landscaped areas in front of the units. So we propose tree protection and tree preservation around them, so that way the construction doesn't damage them very well. But, we actually deferred entirely to our landscape architect in that respect as to what he felt would be appropriate to try and maintain and preserve during construction. And what he felt, based on what we proposed, would just be difficult for us to preserve and would be better off replacing in kind of...
I understand, I understand that, that you want to get your footprint there, but by the same token, judicial planning... by the same token, judicial planning, you may be able to save some of those very nice trees and not have to wait 20 years so it gets up there.
Yeah.
The other thing is that pushing the envelope, I mean, that's what you're doing. You're saying, oh geez, we've got to get up to 25 and it's not good enough. And the next one comes in and says, we need it 30 or 35 feet or 40 feet. All that is, is pushing the envelope, and Mr. Bustle talked about that at the last meeting. If the city is out of step, then we need to have the ordinance changed. And, and you have a commissioner in there that, that beats his chest and says, oh gee, it should be higher than this. Well, he needs to go before the council or something in order to get that changed, if it needs to be changed. I don't know that it does. What you're proposing is minimal, and I don't, I really don't have a problem with it. But the idea that, that we keep pushing the envelope, maybe we better change the envelope.
I would agree with that, that statement and that assessment, too. I, I think that this portion of the ordinance could use some, a little, use some direct attention as to whether or not it needs to be updated. It's my professional opinion that it, that it does need to be updated and increased slightly. The reason being for that is, as it's written right now, it constricts your, your ability to play with the design. And one of the criticisms that we actually received from the planning commission, not, and not just Commissioner Griffiths, but the entire commission itself, was that they felt we were a little safe in our designs and aesthetics for this development. And they, they wanted us to take a little bit more risk with the, with the look of this development. We, we stuck to a more traditional residential style, you know, more contemporary style. And they wanted to see a little bit more risk taken from us. That would have been difficult, given the, the constraints of the, of the lang, the ordinance language at 25 feet. So, but I, I do agree that it, it should be addressed and looked at, at, in the ordinance from the, and the, at the city council level and addressed at that point. Unfortunately for, for us as developers, if we sat, if we, you know, put aside the ZBA route, that, you know, opportunity and option that we have, and simply said, we're going to push for the ordinance change, we're going to be losing a lot of valuable time in developing these projects, you know?
Well, yeah, changing the ordinance is not something you're going to do overnight.
Overnight, no, it will, it will take a while, yes.
Yeah, I don't have, your, your development looks attractive, and I think it will be a benefit to the city of Southfield, and so with that.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have much more to say other than I think it's a well-thought-out, very documented by Mr. Calabat, and I do agree with pretty much everything he said. I don't think a foot and a half is a big deal. People put their dishes on top of the roof and they go two or three feet higher, so that's not, it's not a big deal. And I look forward to seeing some development here in Southfield.
Okay. So I agree, yeah, my comments haven't changed from the last meeting. I think it's a minimal height request and, you know, the density is, as was described by the city is, is minimal as well. So, Mr. Weigand, will you make your motion, please?
Oh, I can do that. I can find it here. I've got two pages. Yeah, okay, thank you. In regard to case 19-04, the appellant, Eden Calabat of Instream PM, owners requesting the following from the board. One, a variance of 1' 6.25" of building height for a proposed townhome development, 25 permitted, 26 feet, 6.25" proposed. A variance of 7.75" of building height for a proposed detached site condominium development, 25 feet permitted, 25 feet, 7.75" proposed. A .22 acre variance of land area to meet density requirements for a proposed townhome development. 5.14 acres required, 4.92 acres provided. The property is located at the northeast corner of Lasher Road and Dunn's Cota Sidwell Parcel. Parcel's 2427-302-040, comma, dash, 041, comma, 043, and 044, zoned R1, single-family residential, and R1 attached, single-family residential. I move that we approve this variance based on this, that the 22-acre density variance requested is minimal in nature and will not have adverse effects on surrounding properties. Developer could build the same size and number of buildings with less interior rooms and still be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. However, the market demand is for mostly four-room units consisting of three bedrooms and one combination great room kitchen. And the height variances requested are also minimal in nature and will also not have adverse effect on the surrounding properties. There will not be a noticeable difference or impact on the open, open space or light, especially since only portions of the roof line will exceed the 25-foot requirement because there is a similar townhome project existing to the north abutting the property townhomes. There will be an average of 85 feet between the fronts of the new site condominiums and the existing single-family homes on the south side of Dunn's Cotas.
Thank you.
Did I hear it correctly? It's .22 acres, not two, 22 acres?
Yes, I said .22.
Can I, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
Your motion ca, your request passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 19-06, the appellant, Kenya Spratt, representing the owner Nikki Clark, is requesting the following from the board. Permission to move a modular dwelling into the city, place on an approved foundation, and connect all utilities. The property is located on the west side of Bush Street between Telegraph and Berg Roads at 23183 Bush Street, Sidwell Parcel 2428, 351034, zoned R1, single-family residential. This appeal is to section 5.25, Article 4, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Hi there, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kenya Spratt. I live at 701 Montclair Street in Detroit, Michigan.
Okay.
Nikki Clark, 19390 Delaware Avenue in Redford, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. And if you'd just give us a brief summary of what you're asking for and why you're asking for it.
Okay. Well, we're, we're asking for approval for, to construct or deliver a modular home to the city of Southfield. We submitted the initial plans to the building department, and they informed me that this will be an additional requirement for the approval. If I was constructing just a regular stick-built home, it wouldn't be a requirement. But since we're doing a modular home, we had, we're here requesting your approval. There, there's currently two modular homes in the area that were already approved. This particular home, it'll be delivered in four sections. I'll do the, all the foundation work, the city tie-ins, and once that's completed, it should take roughly six days to have the home set in place properly versus a stick-built home. It would take maybe a, maybe a month to complete a stick-built home. So that's why we're here for, requesting your approval for, for this modular home.
Okay. Stay right there for us. And did you have anything to add, ma'am?
No.
No, okay. Will the city, will the city read the findings effect, please?
The appellant, Kenya Spratt, representing the owner Nikki Clark, is requesting the following from the board. Permission to move a modular dwelling into the city, place on an approved foundation, and connect all utilities. The property is located on the west side of Bush Street between Telegraph and Berg Roads at 23183 Bush, Sidwell Parcel 2428, 351034, zoned R1, single-family residential, residential. The properties to the north, south, and east are zoned R1, single-family residential and developed with single-family homes in the supervisor's nine-mile Telegraph subdivision. To the west, separated by a six-foot masonry wall, the property is zoned I1 industrial and is currently developed with Grand Sport Collision fronting onto Telegraph Road. Dwelling in the area are mostly one-story homes with two, two-story homes having various sided exterior finishes ranging from horizontal and vertical siding materials, with two homes having partial brick facades. Most of the dwellings have either one or two car-attached or detached garages, with some homes not having a garage. The square footage of the dwellings in the surrounding neighborhood range between 792 and 2,362 square feet. Field inspections indicated that there are trees which will be required to be removed for the placement of the home. Tree removal of, the removal of the trees will require a permit from the planning department. The appellant proposes to move into the city a modular, single-story ranch-type dwelling with an area of 2,280 square feet and place it on a full basement foundation. A two-car, 400-square-foot detached garage is proposed, as indicated on the site plan. The dwelling will have horizontal siding on all elevations. The structure as proposed on the site plan meets the minimum dwelling size, front, side, and rear yard setbacks as, and is within the lot coverage, 16.75% requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, no additional information.
Okay. Will the, the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation to approve a 2,280-square-foot, single-story modular dwelling on a full basement with a 400-square-foot, two-car attached garage with the following condition. A permit shall be obtained from the planning department for the removal of any trees. This recommendation is based on the following. All provisions of the zoning ordinance with regard to setbacks, lot coverage, and minimum dwelling size have been complied with as proposed in the plan. The proposed dwelling would be in keeping with the character and square footage of the surrounding homes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to add? Otherwise, we'll go to public hearing and then to the board, so we'll have you...
No, no additional information.
Okay, you'll just stay in the front row for us?
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Hi there, please just state your name, pull the mic down for you.
Okay, yeah, I am kind of short. Okay, my name is Barb Klimkowski, that's Barbara Klimkowski, K-L-I-M-K-O-W-S-K-I for the record.
Thank you.
I'll sign in.
Appreciate it.
My address is 23169 Bush Street. I would be their next-door neighbor.
Okay.
So I have a couple of things I'd like to ask. One of them, when you refer to modular, modular building, is this just prefab or is this as in mobile home? And that was one of my concerns.
Okay, can the city speak to that?
I can answer that question. This is a factory-built home, no different than it would be field-built in the field that is not a trailer-type home.
Okay, very good. And they're talking about a basement, this, I'm, you know, some of the things I'm hearing here for the first time. Have they done a perk test or, or tested to see if a basement would be advisable? Because I have a crawl space and that area is kind of marshy, and so I'm just wondering if that's something that they've taken into consideration?
We have a few other homes there with basements. They may have to de-water the site depending on when they are proposing construction, but a sump pump should remedy that problem for them. It will be wet. We have a high water table in that area.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Okay, so that answers one of my concerns. I was a little concerned as far as property values. This is making me feel better because the lot has sat there, you know, vacant as long as I've lived there, and I want to keep, you know, any houses that have been built on the street have been, you know, more of an improvement over the years. Okay, and I'll sign in and thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we do have a letter. Would you like to read the letter, Sarah?
Sure.
Or should the secretary read the letter?
Secretary reads the letter inside that.
Mr. Bustle, will you please read the letter?
The letter is from Scott Zuckerberg and is addressed to Brianna Sattipani. Dear Brianna Sattipani, I'm the City of Southfield Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Scott Zuckerberg. I have been a tax-paying resident at 23061 Helen Street since 1999. I also own the lot behind my property, formerly known as 23188 Bush Street. I am writing to ask that you do not allow another mobile home to be placed in my neighborhood, which would be detrimental to our home values. You allowed a mobile home to be installed at 23413 Bush Street. See attached photo. I am pretty sure if you pull off, pulled the skirting off, you would find wheels just like on a trailer. My home on Helen Street is next to another modular dwelling located at 23053 Helen Street. See attached photo. That you allowed about 10 years ago. While not overly happy about it, I was relieved that it at least ended up looking like a house. One of the things that drew me to this area of Southfield was that there was elbow room between the houses with open spaces. Prior to placing a bid on my current home, I walked through at least 35 properties in Ferndale, Royal Oak, no open spaces, and on top of their neighbors. The proposed dwelling you are about to permit is located across the street from my property. I'm starting to feel the walls closing in on me. Sure, I get it. As a city, vacant lots don't pay as much taxes as lots with homes on them. The homes on Helen and Bush Streets have a hard enough time holding their value. Therefore, I encourage you to please make the right decision for homeowners in this neighborhood. Please do not allow another trailer in my neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Scott Zuckerberg.
Okay, thank you. Last call for public comment, otherwise we will close public comment and open it up to the board. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with a modular home if it's done properly. You know, I, it's a very nice street, Bush Street. It's, you can't, I think it's one-way, you can't get access back out through the other You know, I, I listened to the comments of, of this neighbor. I just think maybe, in my opinion, he just doesn't like that kind of construction or whatever. So I, I'm going to disregard that, and I will say that is, you know, I, I think that it's not a problem at all, as long as we solve the building requirements, which it seems to do.
Okay. Mr. Weigand?
Well, there's one of these modular homes in my neighborhood, and I can understand where he says, hey, it looks just like a trailer with the, with the things down. I mean, it's just a long, narrow thing. It's not very attractive, and I can understand why some people are extremely concerned. Are you, as the developer, are you going to live there? Or is this just for sale?
No, I'm the developer. Ms. Clark, you know, as I...
You, you plan to live there?
Yes.
Okay.
And the model is under the same restrictions as the big building.
Is there a possibility of, like this other one, they put a facade of brick, some kind of brick around it, rather than the, the horizontal that goes all the way around? Have you considered that at all?
What do you mean, the horizontal that goes all the way around?
Well, your siding, your siding goes...
Right, it's a ranch home.
Yeah, have you, have you thought about, I'm talking to the...
So what we, what we can do, if it's, if it's required, in, in terms of the foundation, due to the fact we don't have any height restrictions with this, with this ranch, we could raise the foundation a few feet and we could put a port brick.
I have a hard time hearing you. You need to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
That's better.
So, due to the fact that we don't have any height restrictions with this ranch home, what we can do, if that, if that's a concern of yours, we could raise the foundation and do a port brick pattern around the home.
That would be, that would, that would just alleviate a lot of concerns.
Yes, or we can do a brick ledge and do brick around, just like you have in, in this...
Would you be willing to support that as the owner?
Yes. The value of it's at $200,000 to praise back.
Building a home is not cheap, I know that. With that, I, I will support this. I, you know, I, I don't, I don't like the, the solidness of it. As I said, there's one in our neighborhood, and if you can put that brick on the side or something to make it more fitting in, that would be much better.
Yep, no problem at all.
Mr. Bustle?
I just had a quick question. The front door, does that face the driveway or does it face to the south?
The front door, let me take a quick look at this plan.
Because the front door doesn't face the street.
No.
Really? So the front door would face the driveway.
It would face the driveway to the north.
It would face the driveway to the north.
Yes, not the street.
I just had a question to the city. Is there any restriction that the front door or the front of the house has to face the street?
If I might, uh, to the chair, Mr. Bustle, may I refer that to my...
There is no restriction for that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Ms. Leslie?
Yes, um, that's interesting because I thought we had a restriction that the front door had to stay, had to face the front of the house. It doesn't?
There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that requires, requires it, and the building code does not require.
Okay, that's fine. Um, because I was looking on there, I was trying to find a doorway. Um, what Mr. Weigum said that, um, about the brick, it has been the custom of this board to require, um, brick on the front of the house, usually up to the windows. Um, I was of two minds on this because most homes on this block, um, are vinyl siding. And, but it's generally, um, been a tradition and a custom of us, of ours to require the brick because it makes such a difference in the look of the, of the home. Um, I have no problem with, um, manufactured modular home. It is not a trailer. It's not the same thing. It's the same as a stick-built home, only it's coming in in parts instead of individual boards.
That's correct.
Um, so I have no problem with that, but I would like to stay, if the board will agree with me, I would like to stay with our tradition and custom as to require brick on the front of the house up to the windows.
Yes.
Right, what do you mean by the front? The front of the house will be the part facing the street.
Well, that's, that's the end of the house.
That's really just the side.
That's the, right now, then, this, on this lot, that's the side of the house, the end of the house.
I see. Uh, oh, the whole thing is turned around?
Correct.
Oh, I thought that just the doorway was turned around. Oh, boy.
No, it sits, um, deep. Right, so...
I'm not quite sure how we would end up doing that. Where is, if this is the home...
There's your front door right there.
Okay.
That's going to be facing north.
That will be facing north, okay.
When the driveway comes in, and then the driveway wraps around the house to where the garage will be over here.
Um, all right, since that is the circumstance, I, uh, I'm wavering a little bit on that because I don't know quite how to...
Well, what about the idea of raising the foundation and keeping it, keeping the brick at the bottom? So, below...
But that would go all the way around.
All the way around.
All right, that's a nice compromise.
Would you be willing as a, as a builder to, to put it all the way around?
Yes, that, that wouldn't be a problem at all. We'd just have to change the design of the foundation and add a brick ledge to support, you know, that, that, um, decor around the, around the home, which would not be a problem.
Okay. Um, all right.
I, I think you could also do a stamped foundation, a brick-stamped foundation, um, where you don't have to invest in a brick ledge and can actually have a, uh, full brick.
Yes, so we have those two options.
Right.
So, we can do the stamp, we, we do both, the stamped and the brick ledge.
Well, that's fine, as long as it looks like brick.
Right, okay.
Okay, Ms. Leslie, will you make a motion?
Sure. Um, the case 19-06, the appellant, Kenya Spratt, representing the owner Nikki Clark, is, wishes to, permission to move a modular dwelling into the city, place it on an approved foundation, and connect all utilities. The property is located on the west side of Bush Street between Telegraph and Burg, and Burg Roads at 23183 Bush, parcel number 2428-351-034, Zoned R1 Single Family Residential. I move to approve the 2,280-square-foot, single-story modular dwelling on a full basement with 400-square-foot, two-car attached garage with the following conditions: A permit be obtained from the planning department for the removal of trees, of any trees required, um, and that the, um, bottom footprint be either, uh, brick or stamped concrete to look like brick. Um, I, uh, the, the grant is based on the fact that all provisions of the zoning ordinance with regard to setbacks, lot coverage, and minimum dwelling size have been complied with as proposed in the plan, and the proposed dwelling will be in keeping with the character and square footage of the surrounding homes.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good luck with your project. It's approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Uh, will the city call the next case, please?
Uh, for the last case, ZBA case 19-05, the appellant, Allied Signs Incorporated, representing the owner 29621 Northwestern LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board. Ground support, ground support sign in the corner clearance area. Property is located on the southwest side of Northwestern Highway between Inkster and Burg Roads at 29621 Northwestern Highway. Sidwell parcel 2407-351-073, Zone B3 General Business. This appeals to Section 8.36, Article 3, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the SIGN ordinance.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Jim Fields, Allied Signs, uh, 33650, Giftos Drive in Clinton Township. And we are here seeking to be able to replace the monument sign out at the corner at Northwestern with a new entry sign, a lower-grade one, a smaller square footage.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Is the microphone on?
Should be.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So, we want to replace an existing pole sign that was under a variance with the property and granted before with a smaller, lower monument-style sign with architectural elements and, and letters on it. Um, the new sign is roughly 19 square feet under what the past variance was, and for the variance that was in place, if any signs were to be changed on the property, we had to come back before the board. So, that's what's bringing us here tonight.
Okay. All right, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Findings of fact, ZBA case 19-05, the appellant, Allied Signs Incorporated, representing the owner 29621 Northwestern LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board. Ground support sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the southwest side of Northwestern Highway between Inkster and Burg Roads at 29621 Northwestern Highway. Sidwell parcel 2407-351-073, Zone B3 General Business. To the north across Northwestern Highway, east and west, the properties are Zoned B3 General Business and are developed to the north with a multi-story office building, to the east with a multi-tenant retail center, and to the west with a two-story office building. To the south, the property is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential and is currently developed with single-family residences on Sherridale Street and RT Attached Single Family Residential developed with the pavilion condominiums. The site is an irregular-shaped parcel with limited frontage onto Northwestern Highway. The building is set back 200 feet from Northwestern Highway and is slightly shielded by the buildings abutting to the north. The property is densely landscaped throughout. The site's only entrance and exits are along Northwestern Highway. Frontage and the parking is in the front and rear of the building. A survey of signage reveals one ground support sign, 60 square feet in area, 14 feet in height, granted in ZBA case 0428. The original waiver was for additional square footage due to the limited frontage length along Northwestern Highway. The sign granted in this appeal was lower by five feet, five feet, but in the same location as the existing taller sign, which required no additional waivers for increased height. In B3 General Business zone, the site would be permitted one ground, garden ground sign or a ground support sign with a maximum area of 34 squared feet in area due to the 68 feet of frontage along Northwestern Highway, at a minimum of two feet from the property line, line, and not located in the corner clearance area. In addition, one wall sign is permitted for the development, and the signage must face major thoroughfare. The appellant is proposing to install one illuminated ground support sign, 43 square foot in area, 10 feet, 8 inches in height, at the required setback in the corner clearance area near the east side entrance exit to the site.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can you, do you agree with those facts? And is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can we get the city to read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendations for approval of the waiver for a ground support sign located in a corner clearance area with the following condition: The owner agrees to eliminate any prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs, or any type vehicle or persons displaying signs visible to the right-of-way or flags other than country or state designation as required by ordinance. The signage must be installed as presented, signed, and dated as exhibits for this case, and any changes other than face changes must be brought back to this board for approval. The appellant must provide a landscape plan for the area surrounding the ground support sign for approval by the planning department as required by ordinance. All conditions of ZBA case 04-28 remain in effect, and this recommendation is based on the following: The proposed ground support sign would be permitted by ordinance if not located in the corner clearance area. The location of the ground support sign while in the corner clearance area should still provide visibility for vehicles exiting the site.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything you'd like to add at this point? Okay, uh, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? Please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and open it up to the board. Um, Mr. Weigum?
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. I, I was looking at the very, very old, when it came up before, and, and, uh, there's only one other person that was on the board, Myra, 2004. And, uh, there were some people listed on there. This is kind of an aside that I don't remember at all. Um, so anyway, uh, and as I said at that point, it's a gorgeous building, and, and I know you're the sign guy, but it, it is just a really attractive building set back there, and it's too bad that people can't see it. It's kind of hidden back there, but I have no problem with this.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
Um, I don't have any problems with it. Um, you know, it's an area where it's got a very constricted frontage, and, uh, I think the more, the merrier, newer is better.
Okay. Mr. Bustle?
Um, I don't have any problem with it. I went into both parking lots, and you can see down to the east from that part, from that drive, and then from the driveway where Guitar Center is, there's no problem seeing a car that is about ready to turn right on the eastbound lane, so I think it's, uh, it's a good application for variance.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Leslie?
I have no problems with this.
Okay, I don't either. Uh, with that, Ms. Leslie, will you, uh, make a motion first?
Okay. Um, ZB, ZBA case 19-05, the appellant, Allied Signs, is re, representing the owner 29621 North, Northwestern LLC, is requesting a ground support sign in the corner clearance area to the property located on the southwest side of Northwestern Highway between Inkster and Burg at 29621 Northwestern Highway. Sidwell parcel 2407-351-073, Zone B3 General Business. I move that we, excuse me, I'm sorry. I move that we grant the, uh, grant this waiver for the ground support sign located in the corner clearance area. The conditions are that the owner agrees to eliminate any prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type vehicles or persons displaying signs visible to the right-of-way or flags other than country or state designation as required by ordinance. The sign, signage must be installed as presented, signed, and dated as exhibits for this case, and any changes other than face changes must be brought back to the board for approval, and the appellant must provide a landscape plan for the area surrounding the ground support sign for approval by the planning department as required by ordinance. All conditions of ZBA cas, case 04-28 remain in effect. This motion is based on the following: That the proposed ground support sign would be permitted by ordinance if not located in a corner clearance area, and the location of the ground support sign, even though it's in the corner clearance area, would still provide visibility for vehicles exiting the site.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, it looks like we have a set of minutes from March 5th for review.
I think it's a book.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
That's all me.
Anybody have any comments or any changes?
No, I have no, no changes.
Nothing? Anybody?
I, I wasn't there, but I have one.
Okay. That's fine.
And, uh, let me see.
Is it where, where your marker is?
I made a mistake.
Oh.
It's in someplace.
Okay.
Hell, I need somebody.
Oh, right here. Uh, Mr. Rogers?
What page?
On page, uh, 13.
13?
15?
13.
Oh, 13.
Page 13. He's making the, uh, he's making the proposal to...
The motion?
Yeah, and he, and he put, "This recommendation."
Okay. This is a motion.
That's a question when that happened.
Yeah, probably, and he just didn't get picked up.
Anyway, it should be probably changed.
This motion. Yeah, so, page 13, line 23, change the word "recommendation" to "motion." Anything else?
I just want to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Bustle for, uh, I mean, you went through this, and then, and then you did the right thing, and I, that was cool. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th with the one change on page 13?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
And one abstention. They are approved with one abstention. Uh, looks like there is a staff request to cancel the meeting on April 13, or, I'm sorry, April 23rd. Can I have a motion to cancel that meeting?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that meeting's canceled. Next meeting will be May 7th. Uh, looks like there's three cases on the book, two residential, one commercial. Anybody have anything else to say about them?
The, the commercial, um, if I might to the chair, um, the commercial, it's regarding a fence, um, fence request, but we're still waiting for some information, um, in a non-residential fence application to be submitted first to the planning department, so...
Okay.
That doesn't get in on time. That will be pushed to a later meeting.
Okay. Okay, any other miscellaneous?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, good.
You know, it, it came to me when I was looking at, it was Mr. Lovejoy, and there was, there were some others that, that had passed through here, and, and, uh, I don't even recall what they looked like or anything, and I, I don't know why the city does not have pictures of the board. There should be pictures, and, I mean, they got pictures of the, uh...
Well, we are now memorialized on cable TV, so we will always be able to go back and find this.
Oh, yeah.
In 10 years.
Oh, yeah.
YouTube's a great thing.
I mean, I really, I really feel that there should be at least a catalog of, ah, these are guys, yeah, were the, were the, in the board in 2004, and these are the ones that are 2006, and, and, uh, whatever.
We have our words more important than our faces.
Thank God there's no minutes on my stand-up act.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.